I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, Mark Bakker will give the information.
Father and Mother, we thank you for this beautiful day and the chance to get together and talk about our county and preach your blessing to all of you. We thank you for the food that you provided and pray that you bless that to us for our service to you. I pray for these candidates that you will give them wisdom and guidance and help them through their process. Thank you that they've decided to run and to try to help us out. And we look forward to hearing what they have to say and pray to all in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you, everyone, for showing up today. We have some great guests with us up here at the head table. And also, in the audience, we have a few guests in a visiting Rotary, Amy. Justin, you're the newest guest. We have Justin, who, this is his house, actually. He's the new director of the library here at Benson Memorial Library, and he will be our featured speaker next, in two weeks, in two weeks. And then Mary Hill from the Titusville Herald. Thank you very much for coming, Mary. And then Luke Rios back on the camera, thank you very much from the stream television and internet. Thank you very much, guests, for coming. Real quickly, we do have two sign-up sheets, and I'm going to send it to the left side, my left first, because Dick has a sign-up sheet over there. This Saturday and Sunday, a couple different events going on, but mainly the Oil Creek 100. We are needed to have volunteers down at the, thank you, Tracy, down at the middle school. And on Saturday, if anybody could help us out with Road Runners. Every, every spring and every fall, we meet, we meet up at the Woodlawn Cemetery and do two miles, which is actually about almost three, isn't it, Dick?
I think so.
Of highway, so we take on our, our challenge of, of keeping that roadway clean on Route Eight North. Ron Kerr, you won the Steeler raffle this week. Congratulations.
You get, we need a kicker.
No, we got one, so. So congratulations on that. Also, next week is the, Tammy Naps, our program chair, and it's a program that you will not forget. So please, please attend. It's a pretty exciting program, for sure. So, that takes care of those things. Any other announcements by anybody? All right. It doesn't rank that high, Dick, but pretty close to it. So, well, at this time, we'd like to invite the commissioner candidates to speak. They've been given up to five minutes each to speak on introducing themselves, telling us a little bit about themselves and, and why they wanted to run for commissioner and be part of county politics. And at the end, if there's time left, we'll have a little question and answer period at that time. First up is John Amato.
How are you guys doing today? Pretty good. My name's John Amato. I'm a lifelong resident of Crawford County. I grew up in Vernon Township, and I currently live in West Mead Township. I've been married 30 years to my wife, Terry. We have five children. Four of them are married. I still have one in school, hard to believe, but I do. I have three grandchildren and three more by March, so it's kind of exciting. I'm a member of St. Mary's of Grace Parish in Meadville, Pennsylvania, VFW post 2006, American Legion post 111, and the Disabled Veterans of America. I served in the United States Army from 1981 to 1989. My last job was in Hawaii, was a commander of a correctional custody facility. I got out of the Army in '89 and went into the National Guard, did that for two years, then sat out for four, and then went back into the Air Force as an enlisted member in 1995. And I served from 1995 to 2012 in the Air Force Reserves. And I deployed to, in support of operations in Afghanistan and Iraq, six times, from 2001 to 2011. With the highlight of my career being in 2010, I served with my son in Afghanistan. So that's probably one of those things that most people can never say they did, and it was a pretty special time, time in our life. As a social studies teacher at Crawford Central School District and also Conyant School District, I had approximately 20 years' service in the school district. I continue to coach varsity football at Meadville High School and little kids wrestling. I have the first-year wrestlers, which is amazing, because people don't think I have the patience for it, but I do pretty good. All those kids got me prepped up for that, so. I served approximately two and a half years as a state parole agent in Albion State Prison and on the streets in the city of Erie as well. I'm currently partnered with my father. I have a business in Meadville, Pennsylvania, Jay Amato and Son Army-Navy Store, if you've ever been there. I'm on the School Board of Directors at Crawford Central School District and a member of the Meadville Area Recreation Complex Board, as well as the Crawford Central Community Foundation, which is a foundation we started in Crawford County for Meadville and Cochranton Schools, which helps pay for academic, athletic, or arts, things that kids need they can't afford themselves. So it's a foundation that myself and several other prior teachers started. Trying to stay on track here. I guess the last part of this for me is, it's a little bit about me. John, why do you want to run for Crawford County Commissioner? And that's a great question, you know, because sometimes I wake up in the morning and I ask myself that very question, John, why do you want to be? I, I know it's not about, I know it's not about the money, because, you know, that has nothing to do with it. I think for me, more than anything, it's just a continuation of, of service. I've spent my whole life, one way or another, either as a teacher, as a coach, in the military, as a public servant, and for me, this was the next logical thing, maybe before I decide that my life of service, as an official life of service, is over. I taught government for a lot of years, and I used to tell kids all the time, said, hey, you got three things that you have to do, you have an obligation to do to make this work. You have to participate, and the way you do that is, either you write editorials to the paper and let people know what your position is, you participate in a campaign, or you help somebody get elected, or you run for public office if you can. And for me, it was the last of the three, it's just the time I can do it. The last thing is, and this might sound kind of strange, but, you know, growing up in Crawford County, being of Italian descent, I'm very proud of the fact that, you know, my grandfathers, both my grandfathers and grandmothers were immigrants to this country, and I think about those guys a lot, the things that they faced, the challenges they faced, growing up and living in the United States as immigrants. And I really wish that they were here to see this happening, because I think if, especially a guy like my grandfather, I don't think he would ever believe that somebody of Italian heritage could ever get elected into a public office, because that was the kind of discrimination that those guys faced. So I think for me, that's part of my motivation as well. So that's me in a nutshell, and again, I, for me, it's about leadership, and I hope I get the opportunity to do that for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Next up, Patricia Gillette.
Are we on?
Yeah.
You can hear. All right. Very good. Hello, my name is Patricia Gillette. I want to thank you for taking time out of your day to be here and to listen to us talk. I am not, obviously, from this area, but I am connected to this area through family, and I'll mention that here some more later. I grew up, was born in Meadville, which many of us have been, and I grew up on a dairy farm in Crawford County, Spring Township. We were the oddballs out from day one. We showed guernseys at the Crawford County Fair, and almost everyone else showed holstings. So I grew up being a salmon swimming upstream, and I think I've been doing that ever since. I'm not showing guernseys, but just life in general. I am 59 years old, or should I say 59 years young, and I am the mother of three children. My children are all raised. I don't have any left in school. I have grandchildren in school. I have 14 grandchildren now, and I'm not sure, I think that's it, but one never knows. The oldest grandchild just turned 16. We had a birthday party for him on Sunday, and the youngest is about six months old. So I have a gamut, a very, very large gamut, from infancy to teenage years. I am a graduate of Edinburgh University. Many of you have gone there, or you have family that have gone there. Others have family that have gone, or you yourselves have gone here to Pitt, which is, as we all know, a very good school. Edinburgh, when I, when I was in college, started what they called an honors program. And after you were there for, I think it was a year and a half or two years, you were allowed to get into the honors program if you earned the right, and I did. I worked very hard. I graduated magna cum laude. I missed summa cum laude by a very tiny insignificant amount, and the reason I missed it was because I misjudged a professor. I had him when I first started, and I thought his semester exam, when I was leaving college, would be as easy as it was when I started college. Wrong move, and, oh, well. I have taught for over 30 years. 29 of those years have been teaching social studies, so John is my partner in crime, teaching social studies. It is a field that is so broad. It isn't just history, and it's not just government. Psychology, economics, geography, political science, understanding the world, understanding our state, and our local economy, our local government. It's a very broad, broad subject area. This is my fourth year. Having fun in education, I'm teaching art, and it is a different world. Kids actually like to come to art class because they get to play around. Social studies, not so much. Now, aside from teaching, and aside from having a, a college degree, graduating magna cum laude, there are other things that I do and have done. I remodel houses. Yes, I hold a hammer in my hand, and I'm pretty good with a crowbar. I garden and can. I play the piano and guitar, I've written some songs. I sew, I upholster, I make draperies. I've even done some auto body. Anybody in here ever do any auto body? It's actually like art, like sculpting. My first job was in Meadville at G.C. Murphy's. Anybody remember that place? It's a long time ago, right? Showing my age. I've been involved in community service for years when my kids were little. Of course, I was involved with Little League, helping out, you know, doing all those mom things, Cub Scouts. As they got older, I was the cheerleader in the stands, shall we say? Excuse me. I had three athletes and scholars. The oldest boys played Little League, they played baseball, and they played football, and they played soccer, and my daughter played soccer and was a gymnast. Once upon a time, I had a student that said, "You guys were all just overachievers. I wonder why." Well, my daughter was a state champion gymnast, Florida and Pennsylvania. My son, middle son, was MVP football player, and my oldest boy was valedictorian. And my five minutes are about up? Okay. So I would like to apply all of that energy to being your county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patricia. Next up, Christopher Soft.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Christopher Soft, and of course, I want to thank Chris and the Titusville Rotary for the opportunity to be here today. I know many of you in the room, and I hope that, whether it's today or sometime in the future, I get to meet the rest of you. I'm a former Kiwanis Club member, and I still have many friends in Rotary or Kiwanis or Lions, and I know that, you know, the service that you do matters, and I know that it's harder and harder for you to gain and keep members, so I applaud you for what you're doing. It makes a difference, and it reaches people in the Titusville community, so please keep it up, it's important. I was born and raised in Crawford County, except for about a six-month period right after college, when I worked in Pittsburgh, I've lived my entire life here. 51 years old, a graduate of Meadville High School, and while I fully understand I'm in the heart of Pitt country, I will tell you that I'm a proud graduate of the Pennsylvania State University. But that short working career in Pittsburgh made me realize that it really didn't matter for me as much what I did as it mattered where I did it. And so I moved back to Meadville, because that was more important for me to be in the community that I loved. And I became a business owner. I owned and operated Hunter's News in downtown Meadville, if any of you were familiar with it. It was a, a great newsstand. And then after that, after I sold that business, I worked for over 20 years for an insurance company that used to be based in Meadville. My wife Lori and I have been married for 24 years. Our daughter Victoria is currently a senior at Penn State, carrying on that Penn State tradition, and she wasn't forced to go there, but I wasn't upset that she did either. I've served as an elected official in Crawford County for 14 years. Crawford Central School Board, Meadville City Council, I'm in my sixth year as mayor. But it's never been about politics for me. And honestly, anyone who knows me can tell you that I try to stay as far away from politics as I can. And I know that sounds odd for a person who's running for office to say that they don't like politics, but it's true. And I ask you to think about it. Rarely, when we refer to someone as being a politician, are we paying them a compliment. So my reason for involvement in the political process, though, is that I think it's always been for me about good, accessible government and service to those in your community, no matter what level of government you are, no matter how you define that community. I think I've represented the citizens well, and I've earned their respect over the years. And like you, as I said, I've been privileged to belong to social and service clubs, and all of those make our community the best that it can be. The result of all that is I've developed this true passion for local government. We know that kind of government that our school boards are involved with, our cities, townships. But if you've done it, you know it is not easy work at all. Citizens and taxpayers, we want and continue to demand more and more from our local governments, and yet, at the same time, we seem to want those governments to get smaller and smaller. We want value for our tax dollars. You, me, you know, as a citizen and a taxpayer myself, I want those same things. The difficulty is striking that balance between our needs and wants and staying fiscally, fiscally responsible. We know that assistance from our state and federal government gets less and less, and we feel like those mandates from them are getting more and more. So we know we want the services, but we're challenged to find the funds that, that we need to pay for those. Jack can tell you, Francis can tell you, any current or prior county commissioner tells you, knows what the issues are in Crawford County. They're complex, they're varied, whether it's Spartonsburg in the northeast, Jamestown in the southwest. If you're in Beaver Township, close to the Ohio border, or right here in Titusville, you know, the issues are different. And I know that, I'm aware of some of the issues that you're dealing with here. If I'm blessed enough to be elected to represent you in county government, I can tell you this. I will work with my fellow commissioners, first to gain a better understanding of how the county truly functions, what we're required to do, what we're not, where our sources of revenue are coming from, and above all, what do the citizens of Crawford County value enough that we're willing to support. I'll critically look at keeping Crawford County moving in the right direction. And if changes need to be made, I will hope to work with my other two commissioners and fight for those changes for the long-term benefit of our county and our citizens. In those 14 years as an elected official, I've had the honor to work with other elected officials and the citizens of our county, and I've enjoyed doing it, and I'll bring that same quality to county government, and I'd be honored if you'd allow me the opportunity to represent you in Crawford County government. So thanks for being here today, appreciate it.
Thank you, Christopher. Francis Weerspan.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and certainly appreciate that for the fine dinner today. And like Chris introduced me, I'm Francis Weerspan, Jr. I've been a resident of Crawford County since I was seven years old. My family moved here from New Jersey when I was seven, bought a dairy farm out in the Townville area, and graduated from there in 1972. Since graduation, I was, for about 14, 15 years, was involved in the construction business, building homes, doing remodeling, mostly right here in the Crawford County area. And then after 14 years, 15 years of doing construction, I had to earn to get back on the farm. So my wife and I bought a dairy farm down in the Cochranton area, and we still reside there, although we're no longer milking cows. A week after I got elected four years ago, the cows left, and my wife said, if the milk cows ever leave, one of the two of us aren't going to be there, so. Milking is now done in my history, but we still operate the farm, we do some crop farming, and run out the pasture to the neighbors, and work together with a neighbor on raising some corn. During my years on the dairy farm, I was involved in many agricultural committees and boards within the county. Local feed mill, I so, served on the board of directors. I was on the board for Crawford County DHIA, Crawford County Holstein Club, and also was a chairman for seven years of the Dairy Committee at Crawford County Fair. And that's where I, got me interested in, in politics and working with the, with the commissioners during those seven years on various projects up to the fair. That's what really sparked my interest in being a, possibly a commissioner in the future, so. Four years ago, I took that step and ran for county commissioner, and certainly got to meet a lot of new people and make a lot of friends, and was blessed with being elected as commissioner, and I certainly appreciate that opportunity. Through the past four years, we've made some improvements in Crawford County. We have, now have the county audits, they're all done on time. We've went to a single audit instead of human services doing an audit, the county doing the audit, we now do one, so that saves time and efficiency. We've combined some offices to, into one position. Two of those examples would be our CFO and county solicitor. Instead of having a solicitor and assistant, we now just have a full-time solicitor, and both of those have also avoided some costs. And service to our veterans. We took the Veteran Services Department out of the basement of the courthouse, which was kind of hard for our veterans to get to, and certainly a lot of them have some physical needs that makes it difficult for them to get to that space, so we moved it to the downtown mall, where everything's a ground level, that ample parking, and they can come, and we've seen about a double the service to our veterans, just because of that accessibility down there. With healthcare, we were able to save over $4 million in costs by going self-funding, and that was not only for our employees, but also for the inmates at the county jail. We went with Prime Care after a due search, and that has granted those cost savings. We also conducted a review of the county jail our first year in office, as we had promised during the campaign, as some questions have been arisen by some of the citizens about the care out there, and after that study was done, it was found that the county jail was doing a pretty good job. There were a few recommendations, and we did implement those, and has made, made those improvements to the staff, so. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve these past four years, and I would like to do that again, if I'm so blessed to be elected, and it's certainly been a joy getting to know people all across the county. I've tried to come to Titusville several times a year for their council meetings and visiting with people here, so I can get to know more than just the issue of the South Perry Street Bridge, that there's other things that are important here in Titusville. I certainly thank you for this opportunity and the opportunity to speak to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. We do have time for some questions. Anybody have any questions? I think Francis, yep, Mike?
Patricia, you ran out of time. I'm really getting scared to hear you say why you want to be a commissioner.
Okay, we were going to do them all together, but, okay. That's okay.
I want to be a commissioner because I believe that I have the skills that we need here, I have the honesty that we need here in Crawford County, I have the connections that go across the county. I don't have any favoritism for Meadville, Cambridge Springs, Cochranton, Conyantville, or Titusville. I love this entire county. I gave up a lot, in fact, probably to date, over $200,000 net to come home from Florida, because I love it here. So I believe that I have what we need, if you'll give me the chance.
Anybody else have a minute worth of?
Chris?
More? Okay, yeah, Amy?
I just wondered how the candidates feel about the ancillary offices here in Titusville, such as you mentioned voter services. I think that you could increase the use of voter services, not voter services, veteran services, if you had an office here in Titusville one day a week, children and youth services.
Some outreach from the county government over in Titusville area at least. Chris, if we start it with you in just a half-minute or so, and then just pass the microphone down.
Sure. I guess, first of all, you just want to make sure that by sixth class county code, you're able to have certain functions out of the county seat. And I don't know if that would mean permanently out of the county seat or just on a temporary basis, if that's okay. For me, it's all in what we value, and there's going to be a cost, no matter what you do. There's a cost to keep it where it is, there's a cost to move it and have it in a different location. Do we value, as a county, that service enough in another location that, that we're willing to support it? And if we're going to do that, I would also say we have to be aware that we could put something in Springboro. We could put something in near Jamestown, or in Conyant Lake, or Cambridge. So that, that would have to be part of a larger discussion to see what makes the most sense in my mind for all of Crawford County, knowing that it's a big county. So, so someone or everyone is going to be traveling, potentially a long way, but shorter distances for other things.
It wouldn't be just moving, you were talking maybe once a week, having people rotate, and I think that with the cost of gas and other costs involved, it's a logical move to be able to have some of these, whether it's the employees themselves, who will have, have a location that they'll function out of, but for people to have to go to Meadville or have to go and to drive a considerable distance, especially if we have more winters like last winter, it gets to be prohibitive for them to take part in any of these activities or the things that are offered for them. So I think that it is a good idea. There are cost measures that you have to evaluate, there are restrictions you have to evaluate, but if you're not moving the entire office, we're leaving it in the county seat, and we're just looking for locations where we can function from, I think that it is a good idea, and it's feasible.
I think veteran services is the one that you hit on, and that, that's the one that comes to mind, because I have, again, my store's in the mall, and the veterans' office is in the mall, so I know how many veterans from, especially this area, travel there. And it goes back to, again, one is staffing. If you could staff that office one day a week and not, and make it good in both places, it doesn't take away from the office in Crawford, in Meadville, and it provides what they need here, because that's the other part, is are the records here, are they available, will they have access to those records, those kind of things. If it's minor things that they can do, I think it's a good idea, and I, especially because, again, we start looking at our Vietnam veterans, which are a lot of our veterans now, they're into their late 60s, crawling into their 70s, our Korean War veterans are in their 80s, so it's tougher and tougher for them to make the trip. That would be one that I would really seriously take a look at, because, again, I just know how many of those guys travel to Meadville every day to use, use that office. The other ones, it's kind of hit and miss, and again, the bottom line is, where will we find the space? Could we find the space? I know, like Brad, Brad Roy, he, he has two offices that he mans throughout his, his district, and it works very well. He sends one of his staff members up on Monday to one office and one to the office on Thursday. And sometimes they go up there and they sit in that room for six hours and nobody comes in, some days are swamped. So I, I think it's, it's definitely worth taking a look at, and again, veteran service is the one that comes to mind for me right away, so.
Thank you. Actually, veteran services, when the county administrator and I were interviewing people to replace Mr. Cunningham for that position this late winter, early spring, we actually had a gentleman come up from Indiana County, I believe it was, to help us interview, that was a veteran service director down there, and that's what they do down in. do down in Indiana County. They have the, uh, one main office, and he had, I believe it was one or two satellite offices that he would go to once a week, and, and I think maybe one was every other week. But I think that is something certainly worth looking into. We all know Crawford County is a large geographical county. If you don't believe so, just try to travel from here to Jamestown, or Sparty to Jamestown, and there's no easy way to get there, and it's a, quite a hike, so. I think those are certain things we could look at. I still remember that discussion we had when we were interviewing the Veteran Services, and that would be one, it would certainly be worth looking into, but we also have to evaluate that with the cost, but, uh, certainly worth looking into. Thank you.
Alright, commissioner candidates, thank you very much. Good luck in, uh, the next 28 days or so here, and, uh, we're gonna officially close at this time, and thank everybody for coming, and then if there are any individual questions at that point, you can, you can ask in private, okay? Thank you very much.